Everyone, welcome to the Special Improvement District meeting Thursday, June 20th, 2024.
Oh, we did it, good luck.
For sure.
Tracy's joining us remotely, she's just not on yet. So Sunshine Compliance, notice this time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at this 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1046, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting and all meetings in 2024 was provided to township clerk, posted in town hall, and the township's website, and provided to newspapers on December 19th, 2023.
I'd like to ask everyone to please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Should I do the roll call now, or?
Um.
I can do the Sid mission?
I can do the roll call.
Okay.
Is Tracy's not on? No? Okay. Um, let's see.
Want to just wait a few minutes? Want to wait a few minutes? Okay, so uh, let me, let me begin by saying that um, the town has lost one of our very important business leaders this past couple of weeks ago. Madeline Hawes has passed away, she was at the age of 95. At one time, uh, there were three hardware stores that operated on Milburn Avenue. Bunchers, Tiger Hardware, and Lonergans. Of the three stores, only Bunchers still serves the hardware needs of all Milburn residents as well as businesses. Tiger Hardware is now the Basilico Restaurant site, and Lonergans is now part of the Milburn Deli site. Madeline was a constant presence for many years. She was the mother of Frank and the ex-mother-in-law of Marlene, both of whom serve customers on a daily basis. The Hawes family purchased Bun- Bunchers in 1983. The store is the oldest in town dating back almost 100 years, or over 100 years, I should say. And I just want to take a moment to extend our sincerest condolences to the entire family. Maybe we have a moment of silence, please, for in memory of Mrs. Hawes. Thank you very much.
The funny story, I talked to Frank, uh, we got a bunch, actually went to her, to her wake, uh, and she'll be sorely missed, but one of the cute stories is the seven-year-old granddaughter's that, uh, Gigi, they called her Gigi, was actually the grandmother of Milburn Avenue. And she really was, she was. She was a fixture of the store.
Yeah. Yes. And, and for all those that shop there, you certainly knew her very, very well. Um, thank you for that anecdote. Uh, the Sid mission statement. The purpose of the Special Improvement District is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. The mission of the Milburn Township Sid is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of the township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement.
Would you like me to call a roll and then ask for the approval of minutes?
Sure, that works. Yes.
Alexa Clark. Tracy Katz Levine. Tim Hoffman.
Here.
Jackie Lieberberg.
Here.
Ben Stoller.
Present.
Ashley Schultz. Richard Wasserman.
Present.
Stephen Weiner.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the public session minutes from our meeting on May 16th, 2024, which is Attachment One, Your Packages? Does anyone have any comments or alterations? If not, someone will make a motion?
May have a motion to approve the minutes for the public session from May 16th, 2024. Motion. May I have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine.
She's on.
Oh, she's on.
Yeah.
Hi, I am here, I was, um, absent at the last meeting.
All right. Uh, Jackie Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Affirmative.
Ashley Schultz. Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Please note for the record that Tracy Katz Levine is now present. Thank you. Treasurers, Mr. Weiner.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Attachment Two in your packet is our, uh, monthly budget statement, and uh, just to read through some highlights, May 31st, 2024, our balance in the bank was $131,754 and some change. An updated number is June 11th, just to give you an idea, uh, we have, we had at that date $125,540. Um, just to bring your attention, the special assessment progress. Um, as a reminder, we have a total amount due of $204,000. So far, we've collected 75% of that, or $153,818. So making very good progress, we have a little over $50,000 remaining.
I have even better news. Uh, we got a payment last week, um, we are now at 97%.
Wow.
So there's only about $6,000 outstanding.
Thank you, that's great progress.
You'll see it on the June, uh, month, you'll see it in September, but we have almost all of the month.
That's right, thank you. Uh, one more item to point out on Attachment Two. Of the total, uh, amount of income of $275,618, we've spent year-to-date, uh, a hu- a little over $125,000. So right on target with everything. Um, I think the, uh, tech support is running a little high. Um, so we'll make an adjustment next year, but it shouldn't be a problem for the rest of this year. Um, the next item is, uh, the final audit report, that's Attachment Three. Uh, included in your package, it's the final, and it's, it's all clean, so, uh, we're very happy to report. We got through no comments, and, uh, it's there for your reading pleasure.
And just as a note to that, uh, we filed that with the DCA, there's a copy of that email correspondence of the packet, uh, which is required by law and ordinance. Uh, we also submitted our charities bureau filing to the state and our 990 filing to the federal government. Uh, so we are now complete with our 2023, uh, tax requirements. Moving on, Attachment Four, every month, we do a grant report. Um, so right now, we have three grants that are currently pending. We have a $25,000 request with TD Bank for capacity building to assist small business owners to better engage the Asian community. Um, this is something that's been pending for quite a while, so, um, that, that's on the, the books there. Last week, I submitted an application to the New Jersey Department of Tourism. Um, it's a cooperative marketing grant, and our project is called Small Town Big Events 2026 in Milburn Short Hills. As you guys remember, we talked about the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution and the World Cup, both happening in 2026. Um, this is a $25,000 grant to, uh, cover staffing and marketing in 2025 to prepare, um, an events and marketing plan, uh, for 2026. Uh, Amanda did an incredible job putting together the programming, we, we proposed a local hero cemetery tour. We actually went to the cemetery over, uh, near Giro Park and checked out some of the historic graves to get an idea. Um, public art exhibitions about the history of the, of the war, and potentially a Battle of Springfield reenactment. Um, that'll be incorporated into the town's bissequentennial committee, which is the 250th anniversary. So Alex McDonald's put that committee together, um, in its initial stages. Explore is gonna play a pretty significant role, CETA will play a role, we had a meeting about two weeks ago to talk about that. Um, and then we hope to also work with the same committees, both in Springfield and Union, because the Battle of Springfield was actually in our three communities, and so I think there's a lot of good overlap and also strengthen the application. Um, for the World Cup, we are looking at things like developing a match watch party at various locations, including getting a giant, uh, movie screen and broadcasting games, soccer lessons for kids in non-traditional locations like parking lots and closed streets. Um, a big one is net, business networking and procurement sessions. The state has already released, and I've been including it in my weekly emails, um, businesses that can bid on or start the bidding process on services related to the World Cup. And that could be things like catering, um, could be things like hotels, buses, whatever it may be. So there's, uh, printing, you know, there's, there's virtually nothing that the World Cup isn't going to require from local vendors. Um, and then things like public art, as well as a taste of the nations of the World Cup food event. So I don't know when, um, that decision's going to be made, but, um, hopefully, uh, yeah, well, it'll be this year, because it's for 2025. And then unfortunately, today I found out we were not selected for our T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program. Um, that was to create something called the Milburn Music Mile. The idea was to install, um, public art displays that are music, like, so drums and xylophones and chimes all throughout the town, um, that would eventually kind of be co-branded to connect with Paper Mill. Um, unfortunately, it's, it's cosponsored by Main Street America, and of the 25 winners across the country, 11 of them are Main Street communities, including Bridgeton, which was the only community in New Jersey that won, so hopefully, if we get our Main Street designation this year, next year, when we go after this prize, we can, uh, secure it. So, um, bunch in the hopper there, um, and that is my report on grants.
I have a question, do you have the dates for the World Cup for 2026? What month it's in?
It's usually June, July.
Okay.
And Steve, when do we expect to hear about our Main Street applications, or?
So we were told initially, expected by July 4th, um, but some of the folks that I've spoken to are kind of insiders, they could be as late as September.
Good news, bad news?
Probably.
Yes. Mr. Stoller, Township Committee report.
Thank you very much. Uh, we successfully passed the Town Hall Plaza Consumption Area Ordinance at the TC on Tuesday evening. Uh, so that's well-received, uh, uh, you know, 5-0, uh, 5-4. Um, and, uh, we expect to, uh, to get that going in a, in a couple of weeks here. And, uh, what, a week to week, correct?
We're gonna have to, they're actually building the gazebo's outside.
I, I saw it today, I was gonna mention, looks nice.
Being that time of year, we want to congratulate all the graduates of, uh, Milburn High School today as well. Uh, well deserved, and, uh, on to, uh, conquer the world. Uh, Paper Mill Playhouse Funding Program and Impact of Downtown, that continues to, uh, to make its way through. Um, a lot of misinformation, other information out there about how this is affected. Uh, you know, Milburn, uh, and the ma- and the Paper Mill Playhouse are symbiotic. Uh, so that, you know, it brings a lot of business to our town. I actually walked around and spoke to the owners and/or proprietors of, uh, at least 12 restaurants here in town. Uh, and it really is helping them in terms of being able to keep our ratables high, and, you know, people in the seats of the restaurants in town, uh, during the shows and such, especially with the changing demographics that we've talked about in town of, uh, uh, you know, almost 38% uh, Asian, but a lot of people are not going out to eat anymore. And as that demographic increases and less people go out to eat, the paper mill becomes even more important to us. So, uh, we did a, we negotiated a very, uh, a very, uh, sophisticated deal with them. Uh, boils down to, we're at a pocket of about $200,000 a month for 30 years while taking in $350,000 a month. So it's a net-net positive for the Township of Milburn, we keep the cultural aspect of the play mu- uh, play, uh, playmill. And in addition, we got 15 qualitative programs for our children in the education program. Uh, K kindergarten through 12th grade. In fact, all of the, uh, full dress rehearsals are gonna be open for free to students with IDs. Uh, and then the Carriage House events and things along those lines. So it's just a win-win-win for everyone at all. That concludes my statements.
That's great news, I really, uh, I really want to, uh, highlight, um, the efforts of Steve and Amanda to get this consumption license in conjunction with the Township Committee. This was not an easy feat, and, uh, the quick turnaround, so that we will be ready on July 2nd. Um, the, uh, the outfitting of the, of Town Hall Plaza. Um, I know Amanda does a lot of things, I didn't know, uh, uh, exterior designer was, is part of her talents, but I yet, I have experienced it firsthand, and Steve, you just keep, keep on, keep raising the bar. So I just want to highlight their commitment to the organization.
Yeah, in, in addition to that, um, you know, as we pressed the, the open consumption license to TC, I could not get more and more excited as we grow nearer to opening the plaza. And word of mouth excitement's generating in town. You know, we've either just to be like a little festival down there, and now we're opening kiosks to restaurants to bring them into the, into the venue, the bands in the venue. Uh, it should just be a tremendous draw for our town, and, uh, you know, people who, I have friends in Summit, I have friends in Montclair, uh, and, uh, and Livingston, who have all called and said, hey, let's, we're getting out one, one weekend, you know, one weekend, one night to enjoy the, uh, the plaza, so.
And how, how does the consumption license work? So if you're in the plaza, you can bring a bottle of wine, you can order a bottle of wine, have a beer?
Uh, correct, correct, so it's basically, uh, bring your own, uh, and, uh, if we have a beer truck or something on those lines that are, that, that's amenable, and then, you know, like, uh, you know, cigar and wines. I think Tonino's is actually sponsoring a cigar and wines event at a fire pit down there. Uh, so it's gonna touch everyone and create that, that buzz that we're looking for. Uh, and, you know, in lieu, and, you know, we all were, had our hearts set on the Main Street closure, but I don't think we're gonna miss one step with this, uh, especially if we do the right marketing.
Great.
I would just also encourage the Township Committee to, in their weekly message, to make sure they highlight all the, um, the, uh, events that, um, are, are coming in.
Yeah, and we, and we continue to do so, in fact, I'm actually, uh, doing it tomorrow, so we were just putting that together, so you can hear my lovely voice at 2:00 on a Friday.
It's great.
Do we have our influencer lined up at some point?
Um, I'll, I'll go over everything.
Okay. Um, okay, does anybody else from the board have anything else, or any other questions with respect to the, the, uh, Town Hall Plaza closure? Please know that the kickoff night is July 2nd, 6:00 PM. We will have a jazz, pardon me, 6:30, oh, 6:30, of that, okay, 6:30 PM.
You can come early if you want.
6:30 PM, so I would, I would hope that my fellow board members could join us on that, that evening. And, uh, what is the name of the quartet, the jazz quartet, please?
Bluespear Jazz, they're a trio.
A trio.
Yes, they've played here before, really terrific group.
They're really good.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy, I'll see you on, I'll see you on the 2nd. Okay, July 2nd, Wednesday night.
Well, you know, you know that electric sign in front of Town Hall?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should be, it has been, okay, XR. Anything else with respect to the consumption licenses? Amanda, do you have anything you want to add about the Town Hall Plaza, or are you gonna get to it a little bit later? Okay, that's fine. Okay, moving along from our business administrator, Tim.
My report will be very brief, uh, just morning of Saturday, the 29th. Um, that's when DPW will actually shut down the road, and then will allow the mobilization to occur for all the work that's gonna go into setting things up. Um, and just one other thing to note, because of the changes with the, uh, flow of traffic and everything that's going to be happening, anybody who has, uh, who's parking in Lot 6, if there are 24-hour parkers, or if they are business, you know, businesses who have permits to park in Lot 6, which is immediately off of Town Hall Plaza, there is going to be communication going out, uh, most likely tomorrow and early on Monday, that that parking is going to switch to Lot 19, the old Rimbeck property lot, where Town Hall employees currently park, and there's just going to be a swap happening on Tuesday next week. Um, so that's gonna take effect before the plaza closes, so that there's no chaos with the parking situation going into this.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Slattery.
Sure, good evening, uh, so just really quickly, uh, you mentioned friends from Summit and Montclair and elsewhere who are excited. I'm your friend from South Orange, I'll be there with the, with the family too, so looking forward to it. Um, in terms of the legal update, uh, the, the bear properties matter, uh, obviously, just a reminder, this body is not a party to that case, but there was a motion return date today. Um, I checked the docket around 3 o'clock, I didn't see an update on there, I think it may have been adjourned or pushed to a, to a later date for a resolution on that. I think I mentioned last time that we would probably expect there to be some kind of a briefing schedule or a, a, a case management order of some kind that gives us dates to understand, um, when that case might, uh, reach its resolution. Uh, other than that, nothing further from us.
Alrighty. Amanda.
Okay.
Amanda Dean.
I'm gonna try and keep it brief, we've got a lot to cover. Um, okay, Girls Night Out, uh, we did have it on June 6th. Um, as you all know, the weather was very iffy, and by a miracle, we had the window of the event. No rain, no problems. Um, the mermaid theme was a hit. And, um, just a review of activities, we gave out swag bags, mermaid crowns. Um, we had messages in a bottle, which were coupons to different businesses. We had a psychic DJs, one of them was nine years old, DJ Libra, he was as good as everybody else.
Short Hills resident.
Short Hills resident. Um, gave out lays, had a live, uh, mermaids, candy strippers, courtesy of Splurge. We had a Papa Village in the art alley, um, with three selfie walls, including the large one that we built, um, at, uh, registration, which includes our Milburn, um, marquee lights, which we will also have at Town Hall Plaza. Um, and then the businesses did a range of things from discounts to drink specials, spa parties, uh, art classes, and we had a reception at EVO, which was just lovely, um, everything was just excellent there. A number of participating businesses, uh, 55, and they are from all five districts. Um, our returning committee members, Vicky from Shalas, Nadej, Township Resident, uh, Jean from SLT Nice Skin, and Corinne from Real Style Exchange. Pre-registration, we had 474 people pre-registered for the event, and we estimate that we had between 550 and 600 people attend. Um, sponsorship-wise, we had 4,500 in sponsorship. Um, they were all returning, uh, Barnabas, RMD, Evolve, Menin, SLT, Shalas, Real Style. A new one was Gamechanger Fitness, which is a new business on, um, Mars Turnpike. Um, marketing-wise, Tim, do you have the? I just want to show the, um, the last, the recap reel that Jessica Chews did. We might need to watch it twice, because there's a lot going on. Oh wait, can you put it back? So, yeah. It was great, it was really.
No, no, my, my wife and two of my daughters went, they said it was fantastic, it was packed.
Yeah, it was, and Vicky, thank you, we've been planning since January?
Just as hard as I guess.
Um, but, uh, yeah, it was just awesome. Um, uh, as far as the other marketing we did, our website, eBlast, targeted eBlast, really did a concentration on the people that pre-registered, getting them to actually pre-register for things like spa parties and stuff like that. Um, a great example, Elena came to the afterpar- after-party for Teenskin, and she said she got so inundated with pre-registration for her stuff that she had a waitlist and people were getting kicked out. And then she, people just show up, so she just couldn't have been happier. Um, uh, the patch, mayor's message, banners, signs, you know, and we had a map they got that evening. Um, things of note, our e-subscription list increased by over 250 subscribers because of Girls Night Out. That's the highest, uh, rise in the subscription rate that I'm aware of, it was from May 1st through, uh, today. And Jessica's four videos that she did for us, three were before the event, one was the recap. Right now, the total views are 28,819. So, um, that was great. Uh, business feedback, uh, businesses that responded to our survey, 100% of them are going to participate 2025. Over 60% want to have a theme, so that, now we know. Um, over 50% of the respondents said they had increased foot traffic, higher-than-normal revenue for a Thursday, increased exposure. Over 40% said they had noticeable new customers, allowed them to engage with the public in a new way, and allow them to generate leads, sales leads. Um, 70% of the respondents, uh, asked how they promoted, uh, the most, the majority of them promoted on social media. Attendee feedback, um, this is really, this is really neat, over 40% were new attendees. Um, over 30% attended in 2023, as well as this year. And 10%, over 10% attended 2022, 2023, 2024. Um, and 68% said that they made a purchase that evening. We are having a post-mortem, um, meeting on, uh, the 28th, the committee, and we'll go over the feedback and everybody's experience and tweak things for next year. So, success on our end, had a great time, and glad it all worked out. Uh, so that's Girls Night Out. Vicky, did you, oh, Vicky. Sorry. Um, okay, so next up, um, Upper Milburn Ave Block Party. Um, so something that, um, has become a concern, uh, we primarily want to do this event to get the, um, to engage the residents from the Metropolitan with, um, all the businesses in town, especially Upper Milburn Ave. Um, they are not at the capacity we had expected them to be. And so, um, moving it is something that we would like to do to move it to 2025, when they are at capacity, so that we get the maximum engagement. Um, so that's our, a recommendation, um, and we will, we will work with the Metropolitan, and there's a couple other sponsors to, um, see if they'd like to engage in other things this year, or, um, just.
Is there any way to, just to move the date later in the year, into the, into the fall?
If, if we move it into the fall, we'll have a capacity, um, issue on our end, because we have up to four or five events in the fall. And on top of that, there wouldn't be much of a difference with, um, movements from August to, say, September.
Okay, so that's, that's, so that's the reason, there's not gonna, it's not gonna materially change.
The residential capacity, right.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so then, then it does make sense. What I just would hate is to fill that building up to 80%, 70%, and not do the red carpet for the local businesses, their opening is gonna all start.
Yes. Yes, I mean, I, I spoke to them also, and, uh, and what they anticipated for their July, uh, new residents is, is they're not even committing to a date. Um, because they, they, they don't know what's gonna, what's gonna be. So if you sign a lease with them, they, it's with the understanding that, um, they can't commit to an exact starting date, so. It's a little hard to make a commitment to move in someplace if you don't know what the date is, so, yeah.
And we're, we're, we've been doing a lot of things with Upper Milburn Ave, uh, especially with the Metropolitan, with the welcome packets, um, doing some design work for some businesses, and we've done additional planters, so. We, we feel we've been making an effort there, and that the effort for the event would be more prosperous if we did.
And just as a note, Jackie and I met, she is the CDA liaison, CDA chair, myself, and we met with the Historical Society, talked about Founding Day next year. We're gonna materially change that event to something that is probably in the summertime, or actually, no, I should say that we're actually gonna focus on something for April that's more connected with the high school and the steam fest. Kind of remove Explore from that process, and then CDA is gonna work closely with us on the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of Revolution for two thousand twenty six. So that's gonna free up some of our time in the spring as well. Of course, we're gonna do Restaurant Week and Girls Night Out, but I, I think we can get this done in the spring, and I think it's just gonna be a better product. We, we don't want to do an event where, you know, you have such a small population at the Metropolitan, it's just not going to make sense. So we're gonna speak to the Metropolitan, assuming that there's no objection from the board. We'll speak to them about reallocating that money that they've already given us to two thousand twenty five and, and do the event in the spring.
Okay, and then, that's not gonna preclude us from doing the services for the local business owners, like the Postcard for Bagel Pantry.
No, not at all.
These guys, that's gonna continue with the bags and everything.
Yes, that, that will.
This is just a standalone event that's being moved back to the spring.
Yeah, I'm dropping off another fifty welcome bags tomorrow to the Metropolitan.
And are we able to track how those bags were received or so?
They, I mean, I, I'm not there, but.
It's probably the leasing manager, right?
Yeah, it's, I drop them off to her and then they are, they are given out. What we have encouraged is a lot of the people that added their promotional cards to them, to have some type of code. So when people, you know, redeem them, they know where it came from.
And did you, were you able to get Bagel Pantry in there?
Yep. I met with Daz and designed it, and I'm picking it up tomorrow to add to the, the packets stuff.
That, that's been one of the main things, to be honest, on Upper Melbourne Ave, is a lot of folks don't have graphic design capabilities.
Capacity, right.
So Amanda's been going to Nino's, Melbourne Pet Shop, and the Bagel Pantry. We've had to design all their content.
Yeah.
So they're getting, they're getting free graphic design, you know, so it's a good deal. Have you noticed, Alex, any increase in choppers or people coming in with the gift bag material?
Choppers, yes, there's been a couple, but really it's I mean, you can just tell that it's just the one side that's open. It's just the one side that's open. But yeah, but the people who have, they have been coming back, so that's the good thing, yeah.
I, I just also want to mention that Founding Day, those mill wheels will be, will be deployed in the, we can just talk about that a minute or two. Yeah, if you want to mention that. Okay.
Okay, Holiday Decor Committee is happening. We are meeting in July, just balance. We had a date and we're moving it because a lot of vacation schedules, but we're kicking that off in July. That's going to be members of the municipality, Explore, the Chamber, DPW. So looking forward to seeing what the come up loop. So we'll, we'll be reporting to you on that.
Will there, will there be a budget? Will there be like a line item or a budget for, for that work?
I believe, I believe that's what's gonna happen.
Not at all, but out of the.
No, in the past, it was just gonna come ad hoc.
Well, and also the, they're working with what they have, but then the Chamber did their things where they spend a significant amount of money on rentals. So we're gonna be working on a sustainable plan, but also to me, something that would be in phases, so each year we can build. That's at least the way I would.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, when we spoke with Alex, his feeling was to give us a three to five year build out plan. And I think we play a central role in that, in being able to set up, because we deal with this type of thing all the time, purchasing equipment, et cetera, so I think that's gonna be our prime function with this, is to give Alex, you know, what is the five year cost and, and virtual scope. But we should see an impact this year.
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
But it'll be incremental. But it's better than what the town's been doing.
Okay. Yes, sponsorship funding report. So as of today.
Attachment five.
Oh, sorry, attachment five. As of today, total sponsorship commitments are thirty one thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. We had had a goal of nineteen thousand, and so we have surpassed that and we will continue to surpass that. I do want to highlight a few things. So Girls Night Out, forty five hundred. We have a placemaking sponsor, Save a Tree, for two thousand dollars, so they're, they're getting little plant markers and all the planters. As far as Town Hall Plaza goes, this has just been fantastic. So we have a super sponsor, the signature sponsor for Town Hall Plaza, a new business that they're still actually finishing their space, Garden State Dental Design of Melbourne. The Atlantic Federal Credit Union, which has a location in Union, they are an event sponsor. For First Choice Prep, which is a new tutoring business, actually right almost across the parking lot. They are a new sponsor. And, and then is it Spolnik? Spolnik Law Practice is a new sponsor as well. I will know tomorrow morning whether Center Court Club and Sports of Chatham is going to come in as another event sponsor. That, that'd be another twenty five hundred dollars. So we, we're really proud of how this has gone, and I think it also just is a testament to the product that we're providing at HAVEN. And then we have Upper Melbourne Ave, we'll, we'll be working on that money, but we have three sponsors for that. Fall into Melbourne Short Hills, Garden State Dental Design is the signature sponsor. They're covering the remaining events. Holiday Extravaganza, again, Garden State Dental Design, and Winter Villages, Garden State Dental Design as the top sponsor. Splurge Bakery is the smores sponsor, and one of the Winter Villages is Evan Futter, who had had an EVO sponsorship last year. So anybody have any questions?
Would we ever consider sponsorships for some of our social media or website? You know, like I'm part of, I'm part of some groups, I'm part of some groups in jewelry where you can do sponsorships for like, look like their website, you know, in other words, there's sponsorship opportunities.
For marketing.
For marketing that, that are for certain periods of time on the website. And, and people pay a lot of money to, to insert their name for a specific time period on either social media or on the website. I'm just throwing it out there because I see it in my industry quite a bit. And, and there, there's no, I mean, there's a lineup, there's generally a lineup of people that want to sponsor with their name part of the website. You know, if you want to do fairly inequity, but just something to think about.
You can definitely look at this doing that.
It's great.
Okay, so that's the sponsorship report. And then just want to briefly go over the marketing committee meeting that we recently had, and Rena was able to join us again. Rena Patar and had her little baby in the toe. We were talking primarily about community outreach, capacity, and, and budget, and how we've done a lot this year with the Melbourne School District, Neighbors of Melbourne, Short Hills, the Metropolitan, Hearth Melbourne, First Aid Squad, and also Founding Day. And a lot of the conversation was about how, you know, are we overextending in some areas and are all of these things really connecting with our mission and helping our businesses? So one of the things we talked about was that Founding Day is a lovely community event, but it not, doesn't necessarily really impact the businesses as much as the other efforts we make. So we're talking about backing out of that, which it sounds like Founding Day is making a change anyway. I don't know if Tracy or Lex, have you had anything you wanted to say?
Lex never does.
Okay.
Tracy, Tracy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'm good. Okay, some ideas for two thousand twenty five, to put signs up by the entrance to South Mountain Resort, the South Mountain Reservation, and there's some similar places like that. Also to do a tour of town video series, but we'll talk about that more in the fall at our next marketing committee meeting. We'll come back to you with that. And then I'll go over Town Hall Plaza stuff when CDA does. That's the rest of my report.
Questions or shall I like proceed?
Please do.
Okay, so every month I give the new business, closed business report. We did lose one business since our last meeting, Trinity recap on Morris Turnpike, went out of business. But on the plus side, we have ten new businesses that are under construction or opening soon. We talked about Gold Medal Gymnastics and Aquatotz Swim School, the old Y B Fitness, that's going well. Rumble Boxing is replacing AKT Fitness, and they actually already participated in Girls Night Out. So that was a quick turnaround. AKT was gone and Rumble was in. Downtown, EDY Beauty is gonna be going into the old Melbourne Forest, which was lost during Hurricane Ida. And so I want to thank Jesslyn Lee of the Melbourne Chinese Association. The owner doesn't speak English, but Jesslyn was willing to help me, and she actually called the owner on our behalf and explained what Explore does, and gave some confidence that, you know, this person calling out of the blue is a legitimate organization and we're here to help, so you know, we built up that Chinese association relationship, and Jesslyn was wonderful to help us there. Live Breeds, we've talked about, Melbourne Indoor Golf. I don't know if anybody's following them on Instagram, but they are building at a rapid pace, so Ben and I will be there imminently. But they're, they're doing great over there. Squeezed Juice Bar is coming with the former Elephant Plate. And then want to talk about some openings.
Wait, go back. The, the Squeezed Juice Bar, when, do you have an anticipated opening date?
I do not.
Okay.
I wanna, it's slow. They are building in there, but it's slow.
And then that's right by, by Schlaug, right?
Yes, that's what Elephant Plate was, yeah.
All right, all right. No, I, I heard they're waiting for a floor that's being delivered from Italy that's specially made.
I heard the same thing.
So the floor, the tiles are supposed to be beautiful, but they can't put anything in there until the floor is down.
Yeah.
So.
So then we have three recent openings. Albert Gerard Taylor. Taylor, his name isn't Taylor. The business is A Taylor. So it's Albert Gerard, it's a tailor at the former Futter Shoes. So if you go to Futter, the space on the right, they're doing kind of a soft opening at this point, but I've been inside. It's been built out, so keep an eye out for that. That should be, if not, this week's, very, very soon. First Choice Prep opened recently, the old Jim Wile Architecture Building right across from here, and then Garden State Dental Designs at the former IHOP. So those are three that were those stranded asset properties that we had talked about for a number of years, so three activations on three long-term dormant vacant sites, so very exciting. And then Ben and Mayor Romano and I went to the Hearth at Melbourne opening, and Ben, I believe, has already bought four apartments in there. He was thoroughly impressed. We, we had to go and find him. He got lost.
We call him Crash Pat.
Yeah, it was, they were like, Mr. Stoller, ready to move on with the day, and he just went and leave. It's, it's an absolutely gorgeous facility. It's the old Wells Fargo Building. I believe it's forty seven units and but two or three townhouses, I forget, but it absolutely state of the art, gorgeous. There's a rooftop deck.
Phenomenal amenities.
Do you want to say anything about it? I mean, it blew my mind. I couldn't believe it.
No, I was actually floored by the amount of quality and materials they put into building that place and really structured a building that fits quite well into that corner, even though it's a little crowded at the edges. But the workmanship in the each apartment, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. But most impressive was that amenities they have on the courtyard, upstairs courtyard. It's just really nice.
It's giving me incredible community space.
And, you know, listen, we're living in Hoboken or in Manhattan, if you're twenty five, twenty six years old, you're gonna live right there, catch this train and, and be in Manhattan. It's very good.
Onto business advocacy. So I mentioned the, the time period I'm waiting for the Main Street application. But just to add context, I mentioned at our last meeting that Red Bank had received a hundred and forty thousand dollars through the Main Street program for streetscape improvements and sidewalks. Actually had a meeting this week with the director in Metuchen. And they received a hundred and forty thousand dollars for open space improvements through the program as well. So again, why it is so critically vital that we get into that program, there's, those are significant amounts of money for public infrastructure that you can only access as a Main Street community. So and then I mentioned the T-Mobile grant, which is cosponsored by Main Street. So we gotta get in that program. So hopefully, fingers crossed, right? In terms of CIT legislation. I had mentioned that downtown New Jersey was invited to speak in front of the State Assembly. We put together a committee to look at oversight and best practices at the state level. And we're also analyzing different legislation that's being introduced and one that we're very excited about. There's a bill right now that would allocate a million dollars a year through the Department of Community Affairs for CIT, so there would be ten one hundred thousand dollar grants on an annual basis, only available to special improvement districts. And so we're very excited. We hope that comes through. So really, right now, the state, other than the Main Street program, doesn't offer money to, to CITs. There's no structure within the state government to do that. So this would be a fairly revolutionary program, and myself and the rest of the group are advocating for it, and even if it's only ten a year, that's better than the zero they give now, so very excited about that. And just remember, there's a hundred CITs in the state, only twenty five of them are Main Street programs, so there's seventy five CITs like ourselves that right now don't have any state grant revenues, unless they apply for special programs like the tourism grant. Very quickly to go through the success tracker, which is attachment six in your, in your packets. I, I present this on a quarterly basis. Since our March report, we've taken over management of the Postcard mural. We've repaired that via our Essex County Public Art grant. We've installed the Family Moonlight Public Art Project. If you guys haven't seen that, it's a new mural that's up in the art alley, done by a local artist. And then, of course, the twelve mill wheels as, as our twenty twenty four public art project. Those mill wheels were on display at Founding Day. They are in storage, and we brought out to Town Hall Plaza and will be on display in July and August. We completed the spring maintenance for mulching and plantings. We completed the Morris Turnpike hardscape project. Sponsored a native plant installation on Upper Melbourne Ave, so there's six new planters with all native plants. That was done through Melbourne Climate Action and the Native Plant Group. And then we launched the street cleaning pilot, which is going quite well. We did Melbourne, the, the high, the schools wellness week, we did Founding Day and Girls Night Out, and of course, the entire Town Hall Plaza program. And then something new we're working on, and, and thank you to Jackie for introducing us to our, one of our summer interns. We actually have two this year. We have one focusing on economic development with me and one focusing on marketing with Amanda. And two more coming, apparently. So we're running out of room, but we're actually working on a program called Off the Grid Businesses. It's something we've been talking about. In our database, we actually track which businesses in the CIT have Instagram pages and which have websites. And not surprisingly, about a fifth of them do not have websites or social media presence. So our intern is actually, has reached out to businesses that don't have Instagrams, and has offered to go and actually create them. And so we have our first, actually starting on Monday, Easy Print over at, over here at the Starbucks building. They don't have an Instagram page. They invited us to come over and start one up for them. So hopefully, we get some traction on that, help people get a social media presence. And then we're gonna do the same thing with folks that don't have websites. We're gonna direct them to the, the state program, the e-commerce program. So that'll be a summer project, and we'll come back in the fall with the results, and hopefully it's prosperous. So with that, Town Hall Plaza. I need to give you guys an updated attachment, because your attachment seven is out of date every day, because we keep bringing on new people. So Town Hall Plaza has been a hit with the businesses, but first I gotta thank Tim, Alex McDonald, Farah Kaseem, Matt Larissy, our CFO, Tom Doty, who's our Public Works Director, and John Walker, and really the entire Public Works team. This, as you would assume, has been a lot more complicated than when we did Main Street. We had to basically build an entire pedestrian mall and budget it and create an entertainment program. And so the teamwork has been incredible. Tim's been on the Home Depot website buying stuff for us, and it's been really remarkable. So as Jackie mentioned, opening night is July second. We have live music, six thirty to nine thirty, and then our reception is six thirty to eight. Jack Surf and Turf on Upper Melbourne Ave is catering, so please, all of you mark that on your calendars. On the weekends, yes, R C P too. On weekends, Tracy, from day one, had been talking about a sort of food court concept. And so La Strada is gonna have a mobile pizza oven, which they actually do parties, so let me do that. Mariachi is doing the grilling Mexican street food, nachos, quesadillas, et cetera. And then Jax will be doing lobster rolls and hamburgers and cheeseburgers. And so that's pretty much every weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, throughout July. We have nineteen bands that are booked for Friday and Saturday, six thirty to nine thirty. Most of it is jazz and blues. We want to try to make this kind of a relaxing space, as opposed to a rock band space, but those bands are ready to go. The Melbourne Senior Citizen Group, which is Jamie Hawkins here in Town Hall runs that organization, they're doing. They're doing trivia on Tuesday mornings, so they're using that as the gazebo space. Wednesday, July 17th, Cigar on Fire Pit Night, hosted by Tenino Cigars and Ben Stoller. Sunday, July 21st, Rumble Boxing, which I mentioned before, is gonna be hosting an outdoor class, which is open to the public. Thursday, July 25th is Smores Night, so that's a summer take on our very popular winter events. We'll have the fire pits out. Thursday, August 8th is Glow Stick Dance Party for Kids. And it will be the first of three nights where we will have a beer garden because I just booked yesterday Bull and Bear Brewing, which is out of Summit. Actually, thank you to Jackie again, connecting me with her friend Sambika, who's friends with the owners there. We picked, it'll be August 8th, 9th, and 10th. They'll be serving beer for three consecutive nights and.
They took their Russian dads and take their kids to the globe.
That was part of my thinking. So, and DJ LeBrock, the young kid, is gonna be DJing for the kids. So it's gonna be a nice event. And then before this meeting, I actually booked a movie night, which is sponsored by Home Instead Senior Care. So it's not on your schedule, but that's gonna be August 15th, I think. And then we're also, as if that's not enough, we're doing a, we're working on scheduling a dog owner happy hour. Different community organization nights, chess tournaments with Chess in Milburn, chalk events with Green Door Studio. And then we're also working with Plyables and Hognitas to have them come to us as well. So it is gonna be a very, very busy Town Hall Plaza. And we're gonna, you know, once this schedule continues to be built out, that'll go on social media, our website, et cetera. But definitely be prepared to be busy with your calendar, come on down and experience the stuff.
I would, I would hit a like Aquatats and New Gymnastics up to be there on some of the kid events or some type of new business networking or let them bond and just bring people down to speak to them. I mean, the, I've been preaching for years, we needed gymnastics so I didn't have to drive always to, you know, always across the state of New Jersey to bring my daughters to gymnastics. So I think there's a lot of young families and young kids that would be really interested. So you could use that as a sales tool to get into the aquatics and the gymnastics.
Yeah, I'm really happy. I mean, this is my, I guess, fourth summer doing the space. Obviously, this is the new one, but I've never seen this much excitement for non-restaurants, right? For the businesses that want to set up a pop-up or want to do an event or want to sponsor. We've got to be $8,000 worth of sponsors already. So, you know, I've told people, I don't know what the foot traffic's gonna be like. I don't know, we've never done it, right? But the excitement is there, people really want to be part of this. And then I'm gonna pass it off to Amanda, who's gonna briefly tell you about what it's gonna look like because we've made a lot of progress.
So I want to echo Steve's, thanking Tim and DPW and Matt and Farrah and Alex. It's been an awesome group to work with. We've had a few committee meetings and DPW is just instrumental in making this happen. So please thank them while they're out in this weather, building gazebo's for us. So the preparations started this week. We've had electric installed for the food vendors on Town Hall's building, so they have access to that. Our gazebo started to be built today. Hanging baskets are being assembled tomorrow. For over the next twelve days, the street will be closed. We will have a banner on, at the island on Essex and Old Short Hills Road. Confirm that. They're putting overhead string lights in a zigzag above everyone. We'll be building tables, chairs, they'll be adding electric to the gazebo's. We're gonna have a storage container next to Town Hall Plaza to be able to keep things. You know, if there's weather or like a Jax needs to store some equipment or has to drag it back and forth every week. We're getting outhouses. We're having planters, our games, the marquee lights, other decorations, and our wooden furniture that we always use is coming out as well. The maintenance of the space, DPW will be taking care of the trash and watering. Clark Service Professionals will be doing litter cleanup. Noah's Art Portageons will be doing cleanings of the portageons. And then we will also have, the Milburn Township Police will be there on Friday and Saturday evenings just because those are gonna be the busiest times. And then as far as, just a reminder of how this is gonna be, on the Essex side. Oh, okay. On the Essex end of Town Hall Plaza is where the bands will perform, they'll have their own gazebo. Then we'll have seating in front of them. Then we'll have a set of three gazebo's with cafe tables and chairs underneath. And then we're gonna have, the food vendors are gonna be right next to Town Hall Plaza. And then the Milburn Ave end is gonna be more of the kids' section, picnic tables, the Mill Wheels, games. And we also have cornhole and a few other things in the yard, along with Adarondak chairs and some kind of retro furniture. And then there's the planters and the hanging baskets. So we're really trying to make this a nice, comfortable, upscale.
And of course, this isn't gonna set itself up. So if any board members would like to come out on Saturday, June 29th. Amanda and I will be here with our interns all day, setting stuff up. So feel free to come on down and lend a hand, carry a few things.
Sounds like what you told me before, fabric.
That's true.
Quick question, so the title sponsors, what do they get in return? And additionally, I was in Staples buying some supplies this last week and they have these great little local ads, have you seen it, for Clemenza's? They have, they have these little pop-ups for like $49 or whatever, something. So it's something you might be able to do for local sponsors or minor sponsors. You know, 200 bucks and then grab one of those with their picture on it and go. It just seems that if there's a hundred businesses that put in 200 bucks, which they would all do that to put their name on something, that's some serious cash rates.
What is it fixed to or?
No, they're like little plastic, what, A-frames? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, I've seen that one at Staples, actually, Clemenza's, they have that, I guess.
It's a heavy, it's a robust, plastic A-frame with.
Self-standing.
Self-standing, right.
Well, we actually have those, but I could definitely look into getting.
Well, I would just look at a sponsorship program to, you know, if there's, literally, if you set the price correctly, and I say, well, but correctly, 200 bucks, $50, whatever. So, hey, we're doing these statements with your name on. Because all these guys, there's gonna be, if God willing, there's a lot of traffic through there, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Well, you asked about the main sponsor, they get their logo on the banners.
Right, right, that's what I figured.
And then the other sponsors, the event sponsors, they have their logo on all of our emails, all of our social media. The posters, they, they're on the website, like, they get a ton of coverage. They can also come set up tables. I know we're gonna have more activities added to the board because some of the sponsors want to have activities, they want to host them. So the schedule, by all means, is just the beginning, really. We've got more coming.
And a good example is, you know, like Home Instead wants to do the movie night. They're gonna cover the cost of the equipment.
Exactly.
So everybody kind of has their own thing they want to do and that's, it's great.
We started doing this like six, seven years ago, maybe more, for the stadium and for Nigel Field. At the high school, we would all buy, you know, if you had a business, you'd buy a banner and you'd put it up on the wall and then you just go through there. It's like, you know, individuals, family, Stoller family banner, stuff like that that you can buy. But everybody else will see their name up there and it's built community.
Well, speaking of marketing, everything's going out tomorrow, so I wasn't able to finish everything today. So the website is gonna be built out, press release, e-blasts. We're gonna publish the schedules, all of it's going out tomorrow. So you'll have that when you're doing your emails and your promotions. And then what we'll be doing weekly is sending out e-blasts with what's coming up that week, as well as social posts. We're already in the school district, they're including us in the e-blast, mayor's message. We're gonna have a feature in the Milburn and Short Hills magazine for July. And we're gonna be in the different digital signs, as well as we have our A-frame signs that you're talking about, that we'll have there and the banners as well. So over the next week to 10 days, it's gonna be a lot of posts of building up, of watching this space come to life. So.
And on the distribution of that, I would absolutely put it on the SOMA website. I actually did live in South Orange for eight years before we moved here. But, so we love South Orange, but the SOMA site, Maplewood, South Orange, Maplewood and Summit and all these websites.
So the way it works is Facebook doesn't allow you to be part of groups when you're an entity, but as an individual you can be. So I have an individual page, Steve Burlow, Cid Director. And so I'm a member of all those different groups. So when we do something like this, I post it to all those. So we do Summit, Livingston, South Orange, all the whole thing. But yeah, absolutely, we wanna, you know, we know that 50% of our pedestrian mall users in the past come from the surrounding towns.
Right.
So it's absolutely what we promote.
And flasher on Happy Milburn, of course.
Of course. So, does anybody else, you wanted to say something, Jackie?
Yes, I want to, all my board members to know that Steve will be distributing a calendar that I'd like you all to participate on a weekend when you can announce the band and announce that this program and the programming, that the comprehensive programming is brought to the community by Explore. So we'll circulate that and at least, you know, if you can say, it takes 10 minutes. You get there at 6:25, either before they, you know, when the band starts or shortly after when they take a set break and just announce to the community to follow us on Explore, to make sure they sign up for your emails and it also helps, you know, add to the momentum. So Steve will distribute that sometime before. I have volunteered for the July 2nd, so that date is covered, but there's the whole summer. So I would just ask you all to participate in the music introduction. Thank you.
Can I say one thing before we go on? Hi, everyone. Just before we move on to the next. I mean, we know Steve and Amanda always do a great job, but I really want to just commend Girls Night Out and also the entire committee and the volunteers. And I say, especially Steve and Amanda and all their work. I was there the whole night, a lot of it at registration, but the event as well. And it was just so creative and so organized and so exciting. And the populations and segments of people that were there, like, it really spanned across the age groups and people from town, people from all the surrounding towns. And glad to hear the positive stats on the business. As Amanda said, that was a big focus at our marketing meeting. We do lots of wonderful things and we love our town, but it's, you know, we want to keep ourselves focused on our ultimate goal, which is promoting and supporting the businesses within the Cid. And also so excited, again, I think Ben mentioned earlier, you know, while initially it felt bittersweet with the Main Street closure, which has been so wonderful, just how everybody, especially Steve and Amanda, have embraced, and we have all embraced Town Hall Plaza and really gonna make it great. And it's wonderful to see how it's coming together. And yeah, thank you for taking recommendations that we're always all giving and enabling them to come to life. So it's very exciting and yes, and we all can help raise that excitement in our own circles and we can help make it a success. So thank you all.
I want to really thank Amanda, she's god. The design that you will see on July 2nd will blow your mind. She's done an incredible job, so thank you.
It's gonna be pretty.
So I wanted to ask one question. I know we talked about it and you guys have done such great, great work. I don't want to add, I'm about to ask something, but I don't want to add like another, another layer to this. But in terms of like the food pantry, you know, I know in the past we've talked about putting out some type of collection. It might be a lot to ask, you know, as we're getting started, but I just think it would be great. I mean, we're gonna have announcing bands, we're gonna be having, doing all the social media. It would just be great if we could remember, you know, at some point going forward to, you know, to install, you know, to have something there for, you know, I don't know, whatever we can do in terms of canned, canned food. I know that the mayor said that there are, the need is greater now, that there are more families that are using our food pantry. And I just, I've always felt that that's something that we should maybe, you know, that that's something like we should just keep, you know, keep turn plug as we move forward.
I, I think it's a great thing to do and the pantry storage is literally right there. So it's something that we can, we can set.
But somebody physically has to do it, so it is, it is.
Right, we can make it when, you know, Steve and I are present.
Yeah, but she's put out, yeah, put out a bin and.
And I think, you know, like for the movie night, for instance, you know, what is your cost of admission? Bring a can.
Right.
You know, I think if we, if we do it for certain specific evenings, you know, we can get the marketing out. And I, I think it's a great idea, it's necessary, it really is. Oh, and then just, I want to mention the street maintenance pilot program. So it's been up and running for about four weeks now. It's going very, very well. It's really a combination of litter cleanup and weed whacking. So the team has been weed whacking mainly downtown and Upper Milburn. And it's been great, they've really done a nice job doing that. So I'm very pleased with it thus far. They will be removing the Glenwood Fence Temporary Public Art Project this weekend. And then they will be cleaning Town Hall Plaza both Wednesdays and Sunday mornings as part of the downtown cleaning. So overall, it's been a very good partnership using a local business. So just want to let you guys know about that, that is our report.
Just one question on that, has there been any feedback on the, on the stones or the rocks that were put on Morris Turnpike? How's that coming along?
I checked my babies.
And they're all there.
They're doing well. I mean, you've already, it's funny, I see the tire tracks, you know, people jump in the curb. So I'm glad, you know, they've, they've held up, but that's the reason we don't have the planters in the grass. People jumped that curb like crazy and we're lucky that there hasn't been something more serious over there. But I think that was the right landscaping choice, but I see it now, you know, the people hitting it.
We're glad your babies are okay.
I check my babies.
I just have a question, on Morris Turnpike, what, is there any vacancy there or it's pretty, or is it sold?
So you've got the Trinity Rehab that just went out.
Right. But you have a Rumble box, oh, that went in the.
Rumble is coming, so that, that shopping strip is full.
What's in the old Army Surplus store?
That has been a, it's a Oriental rug company. They've been there.
Oh, there's something in there.
Yeah, it's mainly, it's mainly contractors going in and part of the furnishings that they do on a house. But they actually have two buildings all full of rugs. They've been there probably a year and a half now.
Oh, really?
Just off the top of my head, storefronts that are vacant out there.
You could say AT&amp;T is vacant, there's no one ever in there.
Nobody in there.
Literally no one working there.
It's a bizarre place.
They turned the open sign on and disappeared.
Oh, you know what, there is the old frames store next to.
What about Harmon?
So Harmon's a little complicated. The tenants that were in the YB Fitness, they were using a small portion of it. It's a fitness studio and a personal trainer. They actually moved from the portion of the YB they were using over to Harmon. The owner would love to lease the entire Harmon, but it's a big space. So he's got those two in there while the space they were in is now becoming the gymnastics and swim school. So over there, it's pretty good except for the Trinity, which just went out. The frame store has been vacant since it was, the site was sold. I am in communication with the owner, we're working pretty hard on trying to get a tenant in there. Right now, he's got two businesses that are, I just spoke to him this week, that look like they're pretty promising.
Great.
So over there, I mean, really, very few issues.
Great. Okay, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, we got Ben Dunn in an hour and six minutes.
All right.
At least, you know, before executive session.
Okay. We are now at the public comment portion of our evening. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name and speak into the microphone. Prepared statements may be sent to Tracy at exploremilburnshorthills.org. Speakers must limit their comment to three minutes. Those utilizing Zoom or phone will have an opportunity to speak. If you're utilizing a Zoom option, you must turn your camera on. Please remember, this is a business meeting and we ask that all public comments be appropriate. In response to questions, board members may address them directly or ask our staff to do so.
Jackie, may I just mention one thing before we jump in?
Yes, please.
Just an FYI to the board, that Mr. Feld is not present at the meeting tonight and he forwarded by email to the board some comments and questions.
Okay, I did not see them on my email. Are these questions that he'd like to read into the record?
Um, Mr. Slattery can answer that.
Okay.
So the, the public comment that is sent in writing, we can accept and keep as part of our records of the meeting. There's no need for us to breathe them aloud or anything to that effect unless a board member wishes to.
Thank you, Mr. Slattery. May I take public comments from the floor? Vicky Powell Business.
Vicky Powell, business owner. I'm gonna go fast because I got a lot to go over. Um, so I wrote a letter to the Township Committee, especially to the deputy mayor, because there's some things that he said at the last meeting before this past Tuesday that I want, that I wrote a letter and I wanted to address uh, some of the comments. And I wanted to read it to you guys. So I did send the email with the letter to Steve, so he has it, Tracy. Um, I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing to you today as a business owner from, in Melbourne for thirty-nine years and a former resident of Short Hills for twenty-five. I'm deeply concerned about the ongoing negative messaging surrounding Explore Melbourne Short Hills. As a candidate and committee member, you have constantly emphasized the need for data collection before making decisions. For instance, the Main Street Pedestrian Mall was denied because you and other committee members wanted more data over the summer. However, when it comes to the Special Improvement District, there has been no effort to develop qualitative or quantitative data. It's crucial that you have a thorough understanding of the history and the functions of the Melbourne Chamber of Commerce and the CID. If you were fully aware of the Chamber's activities and the CID's contributions, you would not suggest that the Chamber should take over the CID's responsibilities. The Melbourne Chamber is a membership-based organization that businesses from all over New Jersey and even other states can join. It focuses on networking, holding meetings, and not providing broad support to the business community through events, social media, business promotions, education sessions, and so forth. On a side note, is the Melbourne Chamber even functioning? On the other hand, the CID is specifically dedicated to supporting the Melbourne Short Hill Business District. This includes organizing events, providing education, supporting, attracting new business, enhancing streetscapes, offering grants, and much more. The CID is a vital entity, especially in today's challenging business climate. Cids are public-private partnerships established to supplement government efforts and act independently to meet the needs of businesses, business communities. Unlike Chambers, Cids also have a reliable budget that allows for long-term planning, capital projects, the retention of qualified staff, and more. I suggest that you gain a better understanding of the difference between the CID and a Chamber from both a financial and and operational perspectives. I wonder if you've ever visited the local businesses to ask them how they felt about the CID. I can assure you that I've never seen you or most of the Township Committee members in my store. And that was the only one to ask us about the state of the business and our opinions on the CID. I can personally speak to my fellow business owners and I'm confident they share my views on the importance of the CID. Have you ever consulted Steve, the executive director of the CID? I've been in Melbourne for a long time and I can attest that Steve is one of the most knowledgeable, well-connected, experienced directors we've had. Any town would be fortunate to have him. Have you spoken to the board members, the advisory committee members, and understand their perspectives? It is imperative you do your due diligence before making statements that come that could have detrimental impacts. Successful townships such as Montclair, Summit, Red Bank, South Orange, Mibwood, all have thriving Cids. Their township committee members do not question the need for entities that fulfill their intended purposes. Suggesting that we do not need one in Melbourne is misguided. I urge you to reconsider your stance and engage more deeply with the business community to understand the crucial critical role the CID plays in keeping our town vibrant and prosperous. It isn't ironic that you speak of taxation without representation. Yet your tax, yet you tax businesses without consulting them on the need or representing their interests. You seem to echo a small minority of critics, which is concerning since they do not represent the majority opinion. While we may not be as vocal, we have strong opinions. Thank you for your attention. I'll be happy to speak to you in the future. So that was my letter. I just have one other quick thing. Uh, Ben, you're our liaison. Um, what I've been noticing is when they do construction in town, like for example, today Verizon in front of Melbourne Avenue, we don't know anything that goes on. They closed down Melbourne Avenue one lane a month ago. We didn't find out any of that stuff. We are like second-class citizens. We're not being notified on anything that's happening that's affecting our businesses. And the operations lady that sends out the communications, she's not even putting any communications out, so we can't even get it off of Facebook. So I think there's really a big disconnect in disseminating information to the businesses and to the township committee, uh, township members, the residents. But we didn't find anything. Verizon took down like six or seven spots this morning. And we come in, police officers everywhere, and we have no clue.
Yeah, no, that should be on the uh, it should be on the alert system. Uh, but I'd also recommend uh, to uh, go into SDL and lodge that issue. Because, yeah, because we follow those through the, the, the belly of the snake, the body of the snake.
I will, I will.
And then, you know, it has to come to conclusion because if it doesn't, it remains an open item when we see it.
I will do.
And that's for everybody as well. So.
I will, I will do. Thank you for that suggestion.
Did you say the body of the snake? Uh, Richard Seibert, president. So I wanna commend the Women's Night Out, uh, my wife and six of our family members people from other town. Had a great time. My, my wife said that she actually visited stores. We've lived here twenty-five years and never went into one of those stores, spent some money and uh, second, so I looked over the schedule, the event schedule and um, is the standard embracing the Main Street? I mean, I don't see their name on there. Are they, are they involved at all? You don't have to answer it right now. Um, or any of the other businesses that are on Main Street that, for me, they were having a great opportunity for all these years. Are they still feeling that same love? Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, will you please go to the videotape as they say?
Good evening, Harry Urso. Uh, once again, I would like to state, why is the CID attorney giving a report on the bare properties litigation? When not only is his original retention was specific that they have no involvement and were not retained for the purpose that this body is not party of the litigation. So how much have we been billed for this report? And has the TC or the CID ever received a written legal opinion and memorandum regarding the validity of the expanded appointed five district CID under state law? Is this body in compliance with their bylaws? And perhaps this is a question for the entire TC and the municipal attorney to opine, considering they have total control over this entity. Wouldn't you agree, Chair Lieberberg? Isn't it that how you set up the ordinance you passed in the height of COVID without a feasibility study? Those being taxed do not have the proper representation. For the record, I'd also like to state, that was like wow statement and it's egregious for a business owner to find it acceptable that four districts subsidize one district. It's actually, it's appalling. And if you listen to the meeting earlier, uh, to my understanding, you have an event that was planned for another district that may be canceled. So I wonder why. And for the record, please let it be stated that the executive director continually tries to discredit my comments. He implies I am confusing my questions. But it is he who fails to accurately state all the facts. And unfortunately, concerned members of the public do not have the opportunity to counter his comments until long after they have been said and forgotten. I respectfully request that he stop targeting me, my family, and my businesses with his fear-mongering tactics intimidation. I will no longer tolerate this behavior. And this also should not be a type of behavior that should be condoned by this body and the TC. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Okay, uh, fellow board members, do you have any comments or anything you wanna respond?
I have a few comments. Um, uh, so sure, I, I only, I try to only shop local. I haven't been in your store because I don't work women's clothes.
I don't even sell women's clothes.
Yeah, really?
Does your wife get a gift?
Yeah, always.
Or even just to say hi?
Yeah, or I could say hi too. Um, the uh, uh, to uh, uh, Mr. Seibert's point on the uh, standard, um, I would also, also ask if they have those tables and chairs left over from the previous four years? And is there any way to get our hands on them if we have an event that requires many more? That's one thing they can do to give back is contribute their tables and chairs that are probably in storage at the DPW. I'm not sure where they are. Uh, and to uh, Ms. Urso, um, and just for, for, you know, full uh, full, full operation, they actually, Enzo's uh, sponsored my daughter's uh, bat mitzvah brunch this past weekend. They were fantastic. Did a great job. Uh, I tell you, it's a great job and it was a great event. Uh, and the party was a great event too. Uh, but I don't think it's right for anyone to feel that they're the target of fear-mongering, uh, or a target and fear-mongering. So I just wanna make sure that um, uh, that, that, that was one of my highest concerns. I'm sure it's a concern of the entire board and uh, if it's happening, it should be addressed, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, Perry, please feel free to email me whenever you feel like that because uh, we wanna make sure everyone uh, we live in a, in a great environment. Let's keep it that way.
I can answer this if you.
Sure.
Um, so uh, Mr. Seibert, uh, the standard and Fiamma and Ebu um, are not involved at the moment. Um, we spoke to Ebu. They might do some kebabs. Um, in terms of, Ms. Urso asked a couple of questions. Um, in terms of the uh, the, the monthly update that we get on bare properties, it's part of our monthly retainer. So there's no additional cost. Um, we are absolutely in compliance with our bylaws. I don't know what that was a reference to. Um, and then, uh, I have no idea what she's talking about, accusing me of intimidating her. Um, I'll happily bring the police reports that I filed against the Urso family, uh, which are part of public record. Um, if that's what she'd like me to do, we can put those out for the public. Um, but I have never intimidated them or uh, done anything, which I, I find that comment to be completely inappropriate.
Any other comments from other board members?
Um, I also think it's smart to reschedule the Upper Melbourne Avenue. The whole idea was to get the metropolitan involved. And if the event cannot work as planned, then it should be rescheduled instead of us wasting our money and resources in an event that is not going to be great.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta, I'll definitely, we, we were both supporting the pool party there and they did, the apartments didn't even have a CO yet, so nobody moved into the apartments. There were a few.
Right, but is there, is, so I, I would counter, is there something we can do up there? Not specifically for opening the doors to the, to the metropolitan, uh, but to bring consumers down to the Upper Melbourne Avenue for all of the businesses that are there on a morning of some sort or.
Well, I'll tell you what.
Yeah, like a harp hop, that's a good idea.
You know, one of the challenges that we face on Upper Melbourne is it's not really a retail district, right? You only have food services, Taste Buddy, Jack's, Enzo's. Um, that's it. So you can't do, you know, restaurant event and things like that. Most of the businesses are closed by five P M. Um, and there are nail salons, professional offices. It's a tough environment to do an event without the theme of um, a block party.
New residents.
That was the whole point. Um, you know, I think across the board, a CID is not just events. It's not just market, it's a whole host of things. That's what we do on Upper Melbourne. But certainly, um, you know, I'd love, and we're happy to meet with those businesses and get it insight as to whether they think um, an event is necessary, um, or if it's other services that they feel are more valuable.
And we have had an event. I remember.
We did.
We had, in, or more than once.
September of twenty-one, circle.
We had music up there.
Yeah.
We did Sunday morning brunch music um, in twenty-two. Um, it's just not a very conducive area for events.
Yeah, and the, the best events up there I ever, I've ever seen are the uh, are the town, uh, or the uh, fair, right? Where they close down.
The street fair.
The street fair.
The street fair, yeah.
I mean, it just gets so packed, but I'm not sure if that actually helps the whole business.
Yeah.
No, it does not.
And we're not doing those anymore in town at all?
No, so that was outside of Explore. That was the Chamber of Commerce that hosted those. And the end of last year, the town decided to no longer permit those. They were usually spring and fall. Um, but between the traffic and the lack of impact for merchants, um, the township made the decision to no longer sponsor those.
There was pushback on the traffic.
Oh, yeah, we didn't like it. It was just, our customers would complain. And you weren't getting customers from this, from the, the street fair either, I mean, so that, yes.
No, that's what I mean. That's not very conducive to helpful.
Kind of compes in.
It's just fun for all the vendors. And do we make, we probably made money off those vendors, I would think.
The township, well, not Explore, just to be clear. The we is not us, yeah.
No, 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 I'm talking about Melbourne.
No, because the, they did the cost benefit analysis in terms of police overtime, staffing DPW on a Sunday, barricade.
And the town.
It, it was, it was a, it was uh, it, it, the tan, it did not. You pay the organizers.
You pay the organizer, pay the money, but the town.
Yes.
The, the Chamber of Commerce made a couple thousand bucks, maybe, you know, three, four thousand. Uh, but most of the money goes to the third-party organizer who brings in the vendors. And it's the same vendors every weekend. They just go from town to town to town. And, you know, we felt, at least from the Explore, Explorer perspective, that, you know, we support businesses that are part of the district that pays tax. So we didn't, you know, we didn't get involved because none of those merchants paid into the CID tax and therefore we wouldn't provide them services anyway. So it was a, it was a tricky thing. Um, just, it didn't work anymore. So that's why the town hasn't done.
And I wanted to make a comment, what Vicky said, which is so true about the difference between the Chamber and CID. Uh, I, I don't know if you mentioned it in your remarks, but I believe that the Chamber is a for-profit organization, you know, and, and.
They're a five oh one C six.
Oh, they are.
So not a C three like us, but they're allowed to do lobbying.
Oh, okay, sorry, take that back. I think it was.
But we, but we used to belong and go to those meetings and they are very different. And it is more for networking and, and with businesses from everywhere. It wasn't just. Yes, and they're not, a, a lot of them, as Vicky mentioned, are not domiciled within the parameters of Melbourne Short Hills. They'd come from, they'd come from all over and uh, and uh, the, right, and the uh, and, and the, and the focus was not on um, assisting the businesses, which is really the, one of the critical missions. Yeah, you know, that, what's interesting is, so we used to get a Chamber member sign you put in your store. They used to mean something, right? Member, the Chamber of Commerce. But I wonder if we should have a little sign for like Explore members? You know, all the businesses.
Everybody gets one. Makes it easy.
Everyone gets one. It's kinda cool, which I don't know. It, it sorta.
Yeah, one, one of the key differences, and I'm on the board of the Chamber. I volunteered my time to try to, because a healthy Chamber is good for Explore and good for the town. Um, and so I hope I could lend some of my expertise there. And remember, the district that we represent has a physical boundary, right? So there are businesses in town, like Mia Familia is a good example, right? Down Main Street. That business is not in the CID, so they can't get our benefits, but they could join the Chamber if they wanted. We do not support any home-based businesses because we only are in commercial districts. If you're a home-based business, you can't be part of the CID, but you can be part of the Chamber. So there's definitely different constituencies, but also very different budgets. You know, there, as, as Vicky said, it's, it's, it's a, a membership organization. They're charging three hundred dollars. They can't do the work that we do with our budget. Our budget is, you know, significantly larger than theirs. So it's just, it's, I think in a lot of towns, they're conflated into sort of like one thing. But if you run your chamber and you run your bid correctly, they are two separate, complementary, but separate organizations. We have executive session meeting.
Yes. Uh, so I should read this uh.
Do, do we need to read the whole uh, resolution? It's good practice, so.
Okay.
Okay. He gets bit by there.
Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero three, this resolution authorizing executive session for the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization. The Open Public Meeting Act provides for the exclusion of the public during certain discussion and matters. And whereas prior to the exclusion of the public from a council meeting, it is required that the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization Special Improvement Board of Trustees adopt a, a resolution stating the general nature of the subject to be discussed and stating as precisely as possible the time when the minutes of the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public. Whereas the body is about to consider a matter which falls within the purview of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve and can properly exclude the public from such discussions. And now therefore be resolved that the Melbourne Short Hills Business Special Improvement District shall enter into closed session to consider the following matters, board member personal matters. It is further resolved, the minutes of the said discussion shall be made to the public in a matter when the discussion is no longer of a confidential nature. I certify that the above resolution was duly adopted by the Mishbo and Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization Board of Trustees at the meeting of said June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So just a couple of housekeeping before we go in. We're not planning on taking any official action when we come back. So anyone in the audience can leave. Um, we, uh, we will need a motion to go into closed and Tracy is gonna join us on a separate Zoom link, uh, which Tim has set up. But once we have a motion, we can go.
May have a motion to uh, approve that the Board of Trustees goes into public session to discuss board, go into, pardon me, go into closed session to sc- discuss specific board member personal matters. May I have a second? Thank you. We will now enter to closed session.
I have a motion to return from the closed session, executive closed session. May I have a motion to uh to uh to reopen?
Motion open.
Motion, okay. Second. All right, so Ben was moved the motion second. May I have a motion to to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
JBL.
Okay. Happy